There with the proceedings and leave as soon as possible after the hearing has come to a close. For the purpose of the recording and transcript, I'd be grateful if everybody could ensure that they state their name and role. And also speak clearly into the microphones. So we'll start with some introductions, myself, I am Deputy Tom Coles, I am stepping in for the chair. She is unavailable today and.
Oh, I am David Johnson, Constable St Mary, panel member.
Deputy Alex Curtis, panel member.
Deputy David War, panel, panel member, that's easy to say, isn't it?
Deputy Sam Mezak, Minister of Housing.
Natasha Day, Head of Strategic Housing and Regeneration.
Jack Norris, Policy Principal, Strategic Housing and Regeneration.
And I'm Heather McManus, Team Manager of the Critical Support Team, which includes Affordable Housing Gateway, Housing Advice Service from Customer Local Services.
Wonderful, and thank you very much, we have two hours for this hearing and we have a lot of questions to go through, so we do appreciate all answers to be clear and succinct. And so I will be starting off, as we are going around the proposed budget or government plan for 2025 to 2028. Minister, how confident are you that there will be significant funding allocated in the proposed budget? To achieve the actions identified for your delivery in priority set out in the common strategic policy? Namely, supporting more islanders into home ownership, improving the experience of renters and addressing the plight of homelessness.
I'm certain that is the case.
Can you talk us through how the process to address each of these within the financial envelope available to you under the funding allocations detailed in the proposed budget?
So a reasonable amount of what I want to achieve is not actually a very costly thing to achieve. It's a lot of what I'm proposing are law changes or changing of the rules and framework in which people access the housing market or access various housing support. The expensive stuff, which is the bricks and the cement and the actual physical building of homes is not really something that comes directly from government budgets, because we have arms length of organisations that are the ones that take on that cost and go ahead building those, so that doesn't directly fall into the budget. Much of what I want to achieve is policy based, replacing existing policies with better policies. That in itself is not expensive, the main cost there is for the staff to actually go ahead and build those new systems, write those new laws, et cetera, and that, you know, we have staff in place who do that, it's just a case of prioritising their time and prioritising exactly what projects I'm pursuing at a particular point. But the one thing I was keen to do is to get at least a bit of extra funding to continue with First Step next year. And that started off with an initial £10 million from a few government plans ago. And I wanted for this budget to enable us to carry that and see where we are and enable us to look at what else we can do with that scheme or equivalent schemes in the future, so we've got a pot there to dip into to be able to do that.
And did you make any requests for more funding there to hopefully get some of the most policies developed quicker?
No, I didn't.
Within the Bridging Island Plan 2022 to 2025, references is made to the development of residential delivery and management strategy. Could you provide the panel with an update as to if this strategy has been developed and when it may be published?
So I think at the time when that proposal was developed and written into the Bridging Island Plan, it was before we had established the Strategic Housing and Regeneration team. So there was just a very small amount of resource that was performing a sort of a shadow function of the Strategic Housing unit within government. So it was a time where we were looking to really invest in the government's housing strategy. And how that sort of played out in practice is it's become more of an iterative thing, so all of the principles that were identified as being sort of necessary to make progress and we are very much living and breathing those principles in the work that we are doing. And I think, you know, it would be for a conversation to be had as to whether or not there is a specific deliverable against that as a as a physical strategy that could be published as a policy document. Or if it's just living and breathing those principles and making those improvements in how we are planning for and managing the delivery of new homes for the island. So I'd very much say that we're in the latter position and if we don't need to make that, you know, official publication, because we're doing the work, then I don't think that would be a problem in terms of meeting the commitment made in the Bridging Island Plan.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. The panel notes that the proposed budget explores the possibility of use of public lands for the public benefits. Pages sixty five to sixty seven. How are you collaborating with the Minister for the Environment and Minister for Infrastructure to ensure that the policies prioritising affordable homes on public land is consistently applied across different sites?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's a question you're better off directly addressing to both of those ministers, because they'll have more of a day to day involvement in that, I mean, my headline priorities are policy based and the actual levers that would deliver those things are closer to those ministers for that. I have various meetings every now and then with each of those ministers and I support the work that they're leading on there.
But within your view as a Minister for Housing, how do you balance the need to provide affordable homes with the need to raise capital for other public benefits such as new infrastructure or public realm improvements? And so what discussions have you had at ministerial level on this matter?
Well, a lot of those things are delivered by our arms length organisations who have their own ways of funding those, whether that's through the state's bond or whether it's through private lending, they have requirements within that on public realm improvements. We are getting private developers who are looking at various sites, who are approaching us and asking trying to work with us basically to make sure that they're on the right tracks in, into living the right kind of homes on that and the right kind of designs and facilities. That's an ongoing thing and I meet with those bodies frequently, but they, you know, they would fund that themselves and build that into their model.
I guess, Minister, there is a question here about kind of the onward strategy with regard to public land and the trade offs that the public can make and that, you know, from my perception and from the government plan or the budget extends beyond government sites to public land, which is ALO, state entities, you mentioned arms length bodies. You know, it would be nice to try and think about where would you like to see that, whereas Minister for Housing, do you see your interplay with those relationships in setting that strategy moving forward, so?
So when you're talking about public land, are you talking about places like the waterfront?
The waterfront or, yeah, land that is owned ultimately by the public through any of the entities it has.
Yeah, so the Regeneration Steering Group works very closely with SOJDC, I'm not actually a member of that group, but I am pretty good at meeting with the SOJDC and working through with them. What access routes I'd like to see developed for the homes that are built on there. I'm one person with opinions about what looks nice or, you know, what facilities in my mind would logically be placed best on some of those sites, but that's a collective effort to settle on what's exactly right there. But my priority in those conversations with those, with the SOJDC in particular is, right, whatever homes you're gonna build, who's gonna get them, what are the access routes going to be for them, how do we maximise opportunities with the homes that you're built? That they go to the people who would most benefit from them, that there is an appropriate gateway that, you know, might have this level of means test, might have this level of support, et cetera. So a large part of the conversations I have with them is about that policy of how people access the homes they build, whereas Regeneration Steering Group, I think, would be more involved about public realm, what facilities go where, you know, what you, what's underneath the housing, if it's apartments above a ground floor facility or something like that.
I mean, one interesting kind of parallel is, we've asked you before about your relationship with the rezoned housing sites and the Minister for Housing consults on that and you've made it clear, Minister, that you believe contributing, conversation about the quality and the living conditions of those units is part of your duty on rezoned housing sites, do you see the same, you know, you're saying you're not a member of the Regeneration Steering Group, but do you see the same level of kind of almost ministerial responsibility for consulting on these sites and saying pathways, ownership is one thing, but quality and design is also within your remit as with rezoned housing sites?
Yeah, I want people to live in nice homes that are suitable, that are comfortable and that people can have happy lives in. And that is a point of feedback that I'm consistently making when we are making submissions when planning applications are coming forward, so not even just from government entities, but others that are putting planning applications. My officers can confirm that I am often very keen to say if I think that there's an issue with how homes are designed that don't look like they're going to be comfortable to live in. Size of those is one thing, I've been particularly keen to make a point on that the Assembly, thanks to Deputy Coles's proposition, has issued a verdict on improving the sizes of one bedroom apartments and I've been reiterating that in my comments and been blunt sometimes when designs have come to us that I haven't felt have been accommodating that properly.
So those simple questions, would it not be helpful if the Minister for Housing was a member of the Regeneration Steering Group? Does it put you at a disadvantage in some respects?
I have to be honest in that I'm not amazingly keen on on loads of different groups existing with loads of different terms of reference, doing a lot of talking. I think the best use of my time is focused on the policy things that I've highlighted as my priorities. In particular, residential tenancy law is my number one priority this year to get done. That's something that I'm better placed to do, I can feed into and contribute to those other processes, but if you're asking me to spend hours and hours of my time in involved in groups and bodies that sometimes do more talking than action, I'm not convinced that's as best used of my time, given the priorities that I've set.
Accepting that, and the present arrangements, you're content that your policy input is well received?
Yes.
Minister, within the budget for 2025 to 2028, there's a section that has dedicated sites to be developed between government plans. Can you please explain further what is meant by this? Are there any sites already under consideration to be developed between government plans?
I'm not entirely sure what that means, do you have any idea?
It's page sixty six on the government plan, there's a.
Repeat the.
So there's a section dedicated to sites to be developed in between government plans. Can you explain, please explain further what is meant by this? Are there any sites already under consideration to be developed between government plans?
Yes, I can answer that question. So that was included in the government plan, so the origins of that section of public land for public benefit comes as a direct result of Deputy Mezak's amendment to the Bridging Island Plan in Policy H5, which requires all sites to be brought forward, especially where they're not to be 100% affordable homes. For that to be articulated in the government plan, so that section now exists to capture that previous state's decision and that cross link back to the Bridging Island Plan. The reason why that specific paragraph is included is that, you know, government plans and budgets run on an annual cycle and over that period of time some things can arise and decisions can be made that weren't necessarily planned for or able to be sort of very firmly articulated in a government plan at that given point in the time when the government plan was prepared. So it was just to make sure that we were trying to introduce a degree of flexibility. I mean, going back to the heart of the amendment to the Bridging Island Plan, there would always be that tension that the specifics wouldn't be identified in the Bridging Island Plan, so how effective that would have actually been in practice if it ever needs to be called upon. But I said that the priority is to make sure that we don't hold back the progression of a site because it missed that moment in time for inclusion in the Bridging Island Plan. Fortunately, we haven't come about any of those scenarios and I can't foresee any sites coming forward at the moment that aren't already expressed in that table that's in the government plan.
Okay, which good leaves me, so what are the specific plans for the Aviemore site? And how will it, how will the creation of a fund to deliver public value by supporting care experienced islanders be managed? Can you elaborate further on this?
Not really, because it's not something I've been heavily involved in.
Okay, so let me move on to some more specific sites in regards to Hughnot House, Philip Le Fevre House and thirty eight Lamont Street. What input did you have as Housing Minister on the specific number of open market homes to be considered for these sites?
None.
Do you think you should have had an input or are you happy with the way?
My preference, my political preference is clear and on the record and Natasha just referred to my very prescient amendment to the Bridging Island Plan previously, that I have always pitched to maximise the proportion of affordable housing delivered on frankly all sites, but a special responsibility to government and the agencies that we own to take advantage of our unique position as a player in the market of delivering homes to maximise all of that. And that is always my position to maximise that and that's well known.
So this site is developed into almost three clear different sections between Philip Le Fevre, Hughnot House and thirty eight Lamont Street. Do you feel that two thirds is a good balance?
Yeah, probably.
So then we're going on to some other incentives that are being offered to first time buyers and downsizers of the South Hill sites. Do you know how these will be funded?
Well, so there's different options for how, what assisted purchase products that you have. We're in discussions with SOJDC about how they can do that. Some of that will be shared equity, in which case SOJDC hold on to a portion of the equity in those homes, but they eventually get it in the long run when when homes are eventually sold on for the full value. They, for downsizers, are exploring mechanisms that they can offer within their financial parameters on support for moving, support for stamp duty, that kind of thing. But they're looking at it from within their own terms.
So talking now about the proposed development of the waterfront. Are you aware of any new plans coming forward for this area?
I believe that next month they're doing something, can you remind me what that is?
Yes, SOJDC are preparing to brief state members on how they're starting to move the plans for the waterfront forward.
There were concerns raised in 2023 following submitted plans by SOJDC around their waste management at Le Collet site. If the reclaimed land was built on, how are you working with the Ministers for Infrastructure and Environment to resolve this?
I'm believing that to them, that's very much in their remits and I trust them to be able to get on with that.
Okay, so this sort of brings us to a larger part of our questions around the budget, but also interconnecting with the First Step scheme. So I'm leaving it to you, Detective.
Wonderful. Right, Minister, you've highlighted that one area you wanted funding for was the First Step scheme that should the budget be approved, you would have more of, but would you therefore say that the First Step scheme has been a success so far and if yes, can you explain the reasoning and kind of how you measure that success?
Yeah, well, it's been a success insofar as lots of people have applied for it, that to me shows that there's a sign that it was desirable for a number of people. In the first tranche, I think we had something like 125 applications for it, that's over twice as many as we thought the whole scheme might be able to support, so that showed a level of demand. And, you know, we are seeking to help people in that situation, so clearly those were people who felt that this was their best chance. I take satisfaction in that and I'm pleased that people have engaged with it. It's been working well, it's not run into any major hiccups. That there was one or two minor tweaks we made to some of the communication on it, just to help improve the understanding of how it works for applicants, but there hasn't been any major stumbling blocks in the way, nothing's messed up at any point, so it's been administered particularly well. One thing that I wasn't necessarily expecting, but I think this is a sign of success for it, is that we have had some feedback that applicants who were granted equity loans, who then went out to find the home that they wanted to use it to buy had some success in negotiating on prices for those homes and in some instances negotiated down, which meant they didn't need the full value of the equity loan that they were offered, which means it goes back into the pot to help more people. It had been a potential concern at the outset of this, that if we were injecting lots of money into support for people buying homes, that there would be a risk of that pushing prices up. But on that micro level, for some people granted equity loans, did the opposite and they actually put them in a good negotiating position to negotiate down. They get home, out of it, a home gets sold and we get more money left over to help more people, I think that's a success.
And I presume as Minister, you've been given adequate detail as to the type of applicants who have applied and ultimately the type of properties in the mix that has been purchased to date?
Yeah, indeed, and so in the first tranche, as I kind of expected, it was more weighted towards one and two bedroom flats. And we decided for the second tranche that we would tweak some of the rules on prioritisation to see if we could get more three and four bedroom homes in the mix and that did happen. First time round, we only helped with two purchasers for three bedroom houses. And second tranche, it was fourteen, so that, and that's to see, you know, what would happen, what the demand would be like, so it was different between the two tranches, but overall there's has been a wide mix.
Great, and you clearly have some numbers about the scheme, so so far to date, how many homeowners have been helped with a scheme that have successfully passed contracting court?
Good question for the exact amount, just trying to see if that's on, because in this, for the second tranche, the first scheduled sale is due to take place this Friday and then the majority of the rest of them will be for October, November. Of the twenty five ish from the first tranche, I'm not sure if every one of them has.
So the final transaction went through last Friday and that was eighteen, the first tranche.
Eighteen in the first and then we'll see a few in the next three months for tranche two.
It was quite, some of them fell away when people's circumstances changed, it didn't take it on.
Correct.
Yep, twenty seven are now out in round two.
So moving to the extended funding in the budget. We understand that transfers are being proposed from the existing legacy housing funds, including the assisted home purchase scheme, a transfer of 0.3 million, the dwelling houses loan fund, a transfer of 1.1 million and the ninety nine year leaseholders fund of 0.6 of a million to provide the further 2 million you referenced for the First Step scheme, so would you be able to elaborate further on the rationale behind using these legacy funds to transfer into the First Step scheme?
Well, we weren't going to use it on anything else, these are funds that were set up in their moments in history for their particular reasons at the time, but it was all, it was all in the principle of helping people into home ownership one way or another. The money was sat there not doing a lot, we've got a good scheme up and running and all of the admin in place to deliver it, so why not? That's kind of what the money was for and we wouldn't be using it for anything else otherwise.
Were those legacy funds considered dormant, were they being used, was there any recent movement on them?
I don't think so, I think one of them might have been touched for something at Le Canavale. Yeah, indeed, one had been touched for that a few years ago, but other than that, I don't think there were.
And was there considered any risk in the removal and kind of?
No, brilliant.
One of them, the scheme was last used back in 2012, deposit loan scheme, so it was a similar purpose for what we were using First Step for, so it was there. That specific purpose of assisted home ownership.
Okay, and then looking at how that 2 million can have an impact, which I presume you hope for. How will the additional 2 million be allocated within the First Step scheme? So could you perhaps provide a breakdown of the number of individuals that 2 million might help?
I can't at this point, firstly, you don't count your chickens until they're hatched, so we'll see what the state actually wants to decide on this. There may end up being a bit more than 2 million pounds, because if we do get underspends from from these tranches, then we can, and that will change the numbers that we might forecast. I might, depending on how applications go for tranche three, I might want to have a little think, is there anything further we can tweak, is there a demand that we've provided for in the first few tranches and one that we haven't seen as much of as we might want to? I might want to have a bit of a think about if there's any sensible tweaks that could be made, but that will be driven by what patterns we see emerging in the final tranche, but I'm open minded, but, you know, maybe we'll just keep it as it is and keep going.
Okay, great, and could you explain perhaps, you know, what decisions and why the 2 million from those three funds were transferred into the First Step scheme and whether other policies or projects were considered for that in essence dormant money around the Council of Ministers table?
No, it just seemed obvious in that there, you know, the whole budget process has been very testing, because we've got lots of ambitions and lots of things we want to achieve and a finite source of income in order to do that, and there's lots of priorities across government. And I'm not going to be the minister that wants to ask for austerity to be forced on another area to get investment for my area, I think we should be investing in all of them. There's been some very brief discussions thus far about whether there are other areas we might in the future want to get further funding for it. We might at the end of the year look at underspends in departments and if there's a transfer that we can sensibly make and not harm any other department's budget, we might look at using that formal process to get some more for it, but that would, if we did that, that would be in addition to what's already in the budget.
So that's perhaps looking for further money for the First Step scheme during the year at looking at budgets, okay.
That sits outside the formal.
That sits outside the government plan, but it suggests that you see a lot of success in First Step, so perhaps looking to that additional funding, the 2 million and beyond, how will success of any funding, 2 million plus be monitored and evaluated to ensure it is still effectively helping those struggling to get on the property ladder?
Yeah, well, if we saw a demand dry up, that would, that would be a sign that either we'd done as much as we could there or that wider circumstances in the market were changing to make this kind of scheme unnecessary. And, you know, we'll have to keep monitoring that as it happens. But I am keen to consider whether there are other models of scheme that could assist people who, for whom this kind of scheme isn't perfect for them. So for example, we do still require a 5% deposit for applicants for this scheme. For those people for whom saving for a deposit is impossible, we might want to think, are there, you know, is there another kind of scheme we could develop to do that? With some of my colleagues, who've just spent some time in Northern Ireland for British Irish Council and we met with an organisation up there called Co-Ownership that offers different kinds of products to help people into home ownership and they've helped tens of thousands of people do that, they've got a rent to buy scheme, we're keen to look at that, that would look different to First Step, but having, but going through the learning experience of First Step will pick up on lots of things that if we wanted to find a way of doing another kind of scheme in the future, we would have learnt a lot and also established the relationships as well, which has been one of the great things of this scheme, working with the mortgage providers, working with lawyers, et cetera. Everybody's kind of bought into it, knows how it works, which means hopefully they'd be open minded in the future if we wanted to think about different schemes and they'd be ready to jump on in that and work with us.
So currently, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but demand, demand for the scheme proves a level of success. But you are evaluating the wider success metrics that you can look at, whether this is the right scheme or whether new schemes need to be introduced?
Yeah.
And will you be able to update the panel in due course as to how work on alternative schemes and what those metrics might look like?
I cannot wait to be in a position to do that, because if we can successfully set up schemes that help people into home ownership through other routes, I'll consider that a great success and it's part of trying to give back hope to our young people that home ownership is viable in Jersey and we've got to do everything we can, so when we're ready to do that, I'll be knocking at your door very quickly.
Okay, great. Moving in the same area but on to the funding for housing more generally. Minister, to what extent do you consider there would be any value in ring fencing the funding government receives from Andiam Homes? And if so, what use do you think it should be ring fenced for and how would you replace that funding stream?
Are you asking me if I think it would be positive to keep the 30 million pound financial return they make for Treasury and put back in housing?
I'm asking, I'm asking the question as I said it, Minister.
Would I want an extra 30 million pound budget? Yeah, I would, and I have consistently made that argument, not just in my time as Housing Minister now, but my previous, my previous stint and as a backbencher and from every platform I can possibly find. I have always objected to the suggestion that government subsidises Andiam Homes, because they the amount of housing benefits that their tenants receive from social security is about 20 million pounds a year and Andiam provides a financial return to government of 30 million pounds a year. I think the subsidy, I would argue the subsidy is the other way around to how others have suggested it in the past. And I look forward to the day where one day we can start moving to a model where Andiam is in a position to reinvest some of the money that it has been subsidising government with back into its stock. But it won't be me who makes that decision, it will be whoever's the Treasury Minister of the day, because that's how that government shareholder relationship with Andiam works, but whoever is in that. But whoever is in that role will have me in their ear saying, let's move as soon as we can to a position where we can do this.
Okay. So, so just, just to clarify from that, the answer was yes. And, and where would you like it? And you'd like it ring fenced ideally for Andiam itself to be able to manage its affairs. And you mentioned investing in its stock. Do you see that priority now being the quality of the existing stock? Or do you see that as a demand for new stock on new sites or new stock on existing sites?
Inevitably a mix, you know, I, I've dreamed of that.
Be a consultant.
Thirty million pounds, but I've, I've not yet formed a spreadsheet of the breakdown I'd like for it to be allocated to. Andiam has demonstrated its great success at administering first step. You know, if they were able to find ways of contributing to that pot from, from their revenue streams, that would be fantastic. And if, and we could work with them to manage other schemes to do that as well if they wanted. But, you know, Andiam has just had its tenth anniversary and when the state set up its quarter of a billion pound bond. And they've done amazing things with it. But that is not a limitless pot of money. They will have to think creatively about how they fund future developments, how they fund maintenance programmes, et cetera, and do that in a sustainable way. And whatever they can keep just means they can do more of whatever.
Sorry, in danger of going off piece, apologies my colleagues, but you mentioned Andiam and the Treasury function as a shareholder function. I mean, are you suggesting that in fact that is, that structure is in a way outdated? That Andiam maybe other armsake organisations should have a bigger master, a larger spread of masters than just one minister?
It, it's, it's hard to determine what the perfect system would be that to make sure that an armsake organisation of the magnitude that Andiam is has the right accountability and governance structures, that it's got appropriate financial management, but that it's also effectively able to deliver the housing policies that are set through our democratic structures. I don't know what the perfect situation is there, but let's be frank, there is a tension when you have Treasury getting a substantial amount of money from a body that frankly, from just my silo as housing minister is not my concern because I don't get that thirty million back. So I, you know, whatever it goes to is not part of my specific mandate. My mandate's housing and I prefer to have that thirty million with housing. So it's always going to be the case that the housing minister will want every penny going back to Andiam if possible.
Thank you. A final question on this, would you therefore be in favour of the MOU, which is due revised by May next year, I think, of that being revisited to give a greater accountability?
Yeah, I suppose so, but that's the kind of thing I'd always support doing because as, you know, as we continue to work together, we're constantly learning new things about, you know, what works well in our accountability structures and, and, you know, what could be improved. I have to say, my experience, and it has always been my experience, including in my previous stint, is that I've always found Andiam to be extremely receptive to me as housing minister when I've approached them, when I've wanted to explore new ideas with them, when I've wanted to do policy development, or when there's been an issue with a particular site or a particular case. It's a good relationship and when we have open and honest communications with us. And Andiam knows who's boss at the end of the day, it's the people of Jersey and through their elected representatives. So, you know, I'm, I'm not going to say the MOU is dreadful and needs drastic change.
All is yes, you allow that.
Yeah, yeah, indeed. So it's, you know, it's always something to keep a watching eye on.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, touching a little more actually on that relationship between you as housing minister and perhaps a Treasury Minister. What consideration are you giving to the development of work to examine the case of, the case for removing the ability to claim deductions for interest paid in respect of residential properties that are rented out? Given that relationship with, of course, tax.
Just to be clear, we have a really good relationship. I admire her very greatly. Our politics differ somewhat on things, but our mandates are different, obviously. So we have different priorities on a day to day basis. But we've had an initial good conversation because there was a decision made, again from a very prescient amendment to a previous budget about this very issue, that we are going to have to have a look at it. We had an initial meeting a few months ago just to make sure that we weren't completely on different pages. And we're not, which is always a good start. And I think there'll probably be some more work done next year to see, are there particular tweaks that we feel we're in a position to make and will we actually go ahead and deliver them? But the initial discussions with the Treasury Minister have been very good and we're, we're coming from the same place and not a million miles apart.
I would ask if it's a priority, but if it's twenty twenty five, it's more a long term slow burn?
Yeah, it's something to look at next year. It's not going to be enacted from the first of January next year.
Okay, well, you've answered a lot of our questions on the first step in our, in our back and forth. So what, what I would ask about the first step before we then round out on some wider questions about kind of first time buyer market is the public awareness of the first step scheme, of course, there was, there are press releases as new tranches go out. But are there any new marketing or outreach initiatives planned for first step?
Not at this point, but we may want to think about doing that for next year, particularly if we make any kind of tweaks. The, the thing to be careful with though is, you know, we have had more applications coming through than we're able to satisfy with the funding we've got. That shows that there is enough of an awareness that people are putting the effort in. They're going, you know, they're getting their financial statements and their paperwork. So people are, you know, a, a large number of people are aware enough of it to do that. I don't want to be in a, in a position of looking like we're over promising and ending up disappointing loads of people who apply and are just unlucky because of the volume of applications. So I don't, I don't think there's a particular issue at the moment. I think the purpose of the scheme has permeated into our society. And I hear lots of people who aren't going to apply for it, but who, who, who sound pleased that government's doing something. And, and, you know, parents of young people, for example, you know, pleased that government is actually looking at something that that's the kind of thing that would help. So I think it's had good publicity so far, but we'll have a think for next year anyway.
That should be most of us on first step. But lastly, for me, on the wider market, of course, as Minister for Housing, you are the, the political lead from kind of thought and policy in this area. So how are you seeing and can you explain how you balance and manage the interest of homeowners who, in their mind at least, perhaps don't want to see a decrease in house prices against those searching to buy who hope that house prices do decrease? Where do you see your, your kind of position in this?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's always going to be a tension and, you know, there is no solution to that, that, that pleases everyone. I, I've often talked about the cost of acquiring a home rather than the value of a home. Because if you're providing systems that essentially give discounts to people when they're buying the home, the, the actual value of the home is still the same. It's just what the buyer is having to pay to access ownership of it is less than it would be without that scheme. So that doesn't specifically bring down the value of that home, it's still worth the same amount. So that's, you know, those kind of schemes are a good way around that. That, that aren't risking, you know, putting people into negative equity or what have you. But, you know, it's a tension. If you're somebody who's recently bought your home and you're intending to be there for a very long time, a short period of time where house prices are coming down is not going to be that harmful for you, unless it were, you know, a massively sustained thing over, you know, twenty years or whatever, where you could end up in big trouble with that. So.
Okay. Do you think there's, you know, have you got work on going with the economics unit perhaps on that perceived versus actual impact of what a house price is for affordability and the impact on, on individuals and families purchasing and ultimately living in, as you say, for a long sustained time? And if not, is there work you'd like to see go on there to either educate or to, to understand the impact of true house price on, on the housing need of the island?
I, I'm, I'm not hundred percent sure if this is specifically what you're asking for, but we do, we obviously have to keep an eye on the income limits that we've got for first time buyer schemes and the value of homes. There are some cutoff points and first step has got its cutoff points, for example. So we have to keep an eye on those to make sure that they're actually realistic and that they do reflect the affordability pinch points that exist for different household makeups, different incomes, different house types that they're after. And we do occasionally tweak those based on that. And, and that's done certainly in consultation with Statistics Jersey. I don't know if that includes the economics unit as well, but that basic exercise of testing for affordability is, is an ongoing thing.
And lastly, of course, first step is a government provided scheme. But what work are you undertaking that will go beyond this scheme to make it easier for islanders to get mortgages to purchase their first home? And the panel does note that in the UK, for example, Nationwide Building Society has introduced measures to assist buyers into the market. And that, of course, is a building society, but ultimately the private sector. So what, what are you, what work with the private sector are you doing?
So, well, this is slightly awkward one to answer, but one thing that we're not doing is caving in to soft requests that, that might have been hinted at to enable first step to be accessed by people looking to buy a new built home. I think we, we worry that if you did that, then you could easily end up with ten million pounds of public funding going into backing a newly built private sector development. Whereas we felt by not including those and making it only for homes that have already been lived in, it forces private developers to innovate themselves and think, right, if they're struggling to offload homes that they're building, what can they do to better market them, to better come up with schemes that, that would attract people or make it possible when they otherwise wouldn't have been? And we are seeing a bit of that. Dandara have come up with some schemes that they're, they're advertising quite frequently about support on buying furniture, support on mortgage payments for the first twelve months, et cetera. And, and, you know, I'm happy to say to them, you know, great work, keep doing that kind of thing and, 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 and we'll be very positive about that. But by, by not allowing first step to be used for that, it's kind of forced their hand to do that and innovate, and that's a good thing.
So you see government can have an impact outside of its remit by the use of its own policies and own cash, basically?
Yep, okay.
Moving on, Minister, to a different subject. You mentioned in a speech recently at a Chamber of Commerce event that you, you have a desire to move towards abolishing the current housing qualifications as soon as possible. That's noted. What level of support do you have amongst your fellow council ministers to progress that?
I, I think that there's, there's widespread understanding among government members that there is, there's an issue underpinning my opinion on this subject, which is the issue of fairness and equity, that as an island society, we invite people to come here and work and we exclude them from the housing opportunities that people who've been here a bit longer than them have. That, that doesn't sit well. It's, you know, I've got friends who haven't lived in Jersey for ten years who I have to look in the eye and know that the rules make them subordinate to me in the housing market. And I don't like that. It's not nice. And lots of people recognise that. It also has the economic impact that is recognised by all of my government colleagues that if we want to recruit people and keep them here working in those industries that we desperately want them in, we need to be able to offer them decent lives and prospects that they can be satisfied with. So there's widespread understanding and support for those issues that prompted me to make that comment at the Chamber of Commerce lunch. The question then of how do you create a system which is more equitable, which sits easier on our consciences and is also good for the economy? There are discussions that are taking place in the Housing and Work Advisory Group, Housing and Work Advisory Group Plus, which has other ministers with interest in this beyond just the core members of the smaller group that are talking about, like, what, what could we do to maybe tweak qualification periods? What could we do with the current licensing system to allow more people to access the wider rental market? But that's not something that we, we have instantly and quickly landed on a solution that we all unanimously agree on. It's something that more work is being done to model what the potential impact of that would be. Because at the same time, we don't want to flood the qualified housing market with loads of new people if we don't know what impact that's going to have and, and what that might have on the wider market. So it is being thought about. We have had several meetings and briefings on this as a group. And we'll see where we get to, but there's some modelling to be done on it to make sure whatever we decide on that is being done on a sound basis.
I think of that, what you say therefore, that there's been no specific timeline, it is work in progress. And in your own mind, have you, your colleagues set a time by which you would hope to come up with some form of options maybe?
Yeah, so I, I think the Chief Minister, if we, if we agree on, on changes that, that we think are sensible and safe to make, then he'd be looking to do that next year.
Okay, thank you for that. And you've referred to already, I mean, how do you see this working from a population control perspective? That presumably will come into your deliberations, which is obviously a major factor.
Yeah, indeed. And we, you know, there, there is a science behind this in working out, you know, if we're only tweaking rather than doing, you know, a massive radical change, but we're still using the, the basis of the system now where we have registered housing and qualified housing. We need to make sure that as, if we let people move beyond their registered status, would we have enough registered housing for people? So and, and what population scenarios, you know, if we're getting plus five hundred a year, what does that look like if we're getting minus a few hundred a year? What does that look like? Have we got the right, have we still got the right amount of registered housing for those people who would still have that status? So they're looking at modelling what?
So that, that, that will be a major part of the equation in the, in your statement?
Yeah, absolutely. If, if we thought that we found scenarios that looked okay, then that might determine if we were to go to a new system immediately or whether we phased it in over five years or that kind of thing, that, that would inform that. And those options are still firmly on the table.
I think, and you, you mentioned that this is being currently worked on, but the question I really have is what are your views on the control of housing and work law sitting within the Chief Minister's ministerial portfolio? And would it be better placed under your own remit? But maybe you'll say that you're working collaboratively and it doesn't matter?
Yes. Please, please, please don't give me responsibility for this law. I already get lots of emails because it's got the word housing in it. People think that I'm the one who decides who gets housing qualifications and who doesn't. And that's not the legal power that I have. And it's not a legal power that I would want to have because it, it has an impact on so much more. It has an impact on the economy, it has an impact on what we've got to provide for our public, public services across the board. That it does have to be more cross government and that's why those powers ultimately fall to the Chief Minister under the current law. And I would not be desperate to take that power from him unless I were to become Chief Minister, in which case I'd be happy to keep it.
Well, there is in Ireland. So basically, you're content with the status quo on the basis that there is, there are cross talks, which is a a, an increasing phenomenon, I think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm content with the framework that the policy is decided and managed. It's just the content of the policy that I would like to see tweaks on, but we're looking at some of those anyway that I'm optimistic about.
You said there was a, a group that's part of reviewing those applications. Do you think that the housing minister should sit on that group as a default?
He already does. It's in law and I know that because there, there's elements of the role that I don't like doing that I don't think I should be involved in. And I've looked at whether that could be tweaked and told no because it's, it's in law.
Right, I think of this. Maybe on to the residential tenancy law, which will be a, will become a a subject in its own right in the next few months. But for the moment, could you provide the panel, please, with an update on, on the law, where we stand, when it will be brought to the State Assembly?
So hoping to have it brought to the State Assembly before the end of the year, but hoping that we'll have some kind of draft by the end of October. I'm very keen to work closely with you to enable you to get all of the documentation that you need to conduct whatever review that you think is necessary to do on that. It's been a journey to get to this part, but I, I feel like we are genuinely on the brink of actually having a law on paper that I can show the public, I can show the assembly and say, this is what it looks like. Let's debate it and hopefully pass it and enact it, which means we are now closer to that point than we have been in the last five years.
You may well say, we'll wait a minute, but can you elaborate on what will be included or may provisions in, in the law?
Absolutely. So I issued a statement earlier this year where I was clear about what I thought tenancy models should look like and specifically the inclusion of things like rent stabilisation. And I've given an absolute firm commitment that those will be in the law. That is the, that is the political decision that I've taken and I'm not equivocating about that. And I won't be talked out of that because I think it's the right thing to do. The new law will have a new tenancy type which delivers greater security of tenure to tenants and ends the carte blanche that there currently is under residential tenancy law. to tenants and ends the carte blanche that there currently is under residential tenancy law to remove renters from their homes with no justifiable reason and end the prospect of revenge evictions too. And it will include provisions that will stabilise rents and put limits on what can be done to increase rents on tenants and provide a framework for that. In my view, a law that doesn't do those two things would not be worth the paper that it's written on.
Okay. And going back to your reference to the residential tenancy law, the way forward, which you refer to, the panel notes that you state that your proposition will include, in quotes, "a comprehensive set of reasons in law to allow landlords to issue notice and reclaim their properties when appropriate." That I suspect might be one of the major talking points. Are you able, please, to now indicate the set of reasons that will be included there?
Sure. So that will include the obvious things, like if the landlord is selling a property and they, and they need possession of it in order to do that. It will be things like if a landlord or a family member of theirs needs to move into that property themselves. It's if they are undertaking refurbishment of that property and it's not possible to do that with a tenant living inside of it at that, at that point. We, I believe we privately provided you with the, the actual document.
Pains not to ask anything, which might jeopardise that, yes.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, indeed. Yeah. But I want to say that I, I'm open for contribution on that list. There are situations where it's fair and legitimate that a tenancy can be ended by a reasonable landlord trying to do the right thing that we happen to have overlooked. I want to know about it because I want that to be a really a good list that landlords can have confidence in, includes all of the prospective scenarios that they might otherwise be concerned about, because the law is not about stopping good landlords from trying to do the right thing. It is only about trying to stop bad landlords from doing the wrong thing. And I know I've got a job of communication to convince landlords that that is what the law will actually do.
Have you had, what kind of discussions have you had around with social housing providers in regards to this? Because you're taking definitions of social housing providers out of the, your scheme for the residential tenancy law, you've told us that previously. So, but what sort of discussions, because all their tenants are still tenants?
Yeah, so there's aspects of the residential tenancy law that social housing providers won't have to worry about, like rent stabilisation, for example, because there's a specific carve out for them, because there's already a system of rent control that exists for them, maintained separately to what would be in the law. So we, we've given that assurance. In terms of tenancy types, I'm not sure exactly.
No, I think over the course of time since, you know, we started having conversations and more meaningful conversations about a new residential tenancy law, I think it became quite clear that the tenancy model that the minister and the previous minister was exploring is very much aligned to existing social housing provider practice. So I think it's, as we're now building up to the presentation of the law, we really need to sort of refresh those conversations to make sure that they are fully aware of where things are going. But I myself don't have any concerns that what is being proposed in the law is going to jar against the practice of a social housing provider. And hopefully they will agree once those, that detail is, is shared more widely with them.
Yeah. And going back to your kind of talk to work with us, which we obviously accept. I think it would be helpful if sooner rather than later, we had a list of those circumstances where the landlord could seek possession and we can then work on them and give you our own input.
Definitely. Thank you.
In general terms, will there be any form of guidance going out at the time? I mean, there have been cases where guidance has been promised, which has not been particularly helpful. And the more, more guidance we can have in advance will be appropriate, I think.
So one of the nice things about getting to this point where we are in delivering the law is that we are now starting to talk about what the communications package will be for when it comes into force and what landlords will have to know about particular changes. I will say that from exploring what this might look like on paper, actually in the law itself, I don't think it's going to look that complicated. And I, I, I hope for most landlords, actually reading the law will be good enough because it will be clear enough what the process is, it will be defined enough and that list of reasons will be clear enough. But we, on top of that, we will have communications as well of that, that put that in English English instead of legal English to, to explain that properly. But I, I think that the law will be, will be good enough, but we'll do communications as well as that.
Okay. And regarding enforcement, because all these things which landlords should not be doing, how how do you propose to enforce any provisions, particularly as regards civil or criminal directions?
So a large amount of this will be self enforcing in that good people who don't want to break the laws will make the effort. And that is what 99% of the situation is now. You know, if people find out what the law is and they make sure to be on the right side of it. If there are instances where, for example, notice is issued incorrectly because it hasn't, it hasn't abided by a particular grounds that's put in, that's put in the law or what have you. And the tenant would have the same freedom that they technically currently have to tell the landlord that they disregard the notice being issued for that, for the reason that it was incorrectly dealt with and say that they will challenge it in the petty debts court if they have to. And if they're right and the landlord can't substantiate that they've, that they've issued that notice legally, then they won't have a leg to stand on. And that will be, that will though be better than what we currently have because at the moment, for a periodic tenancy, if you're issuing notice, there are no grounds that you have to abide by. The only thing you have to do is put it in writing and make sure you give three months' notice to them. Petty debts court would have no power to overturn that notice as long as it complied with those two things. And the petty debts court will have more grounds to be able to explore and if they needed to judge that it had been issued incorrectly.
Yes, you mentioned petty debts court. In fact, the petty debts court do have the right to defer a notice.
Stay of eviction, yeah.
But do you envisage that or have you done any research as to the likely, if any, increase in volume of cases going to the courts where they can cope?
I mean, I, I don't think that it will lead to a particularly large, large volume. And I think that tenants being clearer on what the rules are will mean that they'll know what legs they've got to stand on as well and know that if they're trying to challenge a notice that has actually been correctly issued to them, the law will be clearly, pretty clear that they ain't going to stand a chance in court if they do challenge it. But I, but no, we are, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're in conversations about what, what guidance will inevitably have to be issued as part of this that courts will have to be aware of.
Okay. I think again, something which the panel might look into further when it comes to scrutiny. My final question is the, have you any, conducted any risk assessment that's been carried out to understand the implication of this legislation? Of course, we, we are told of, it might encourage landlords to leave the market. How do you take that?
I'd love to know what, yeah, I'd love to know what risk assessment those who say that have done because I, I'm, I don't think it's a credible position. If you're a good landlord, doing a decent job, these rules are going to pretty much pass you by because they'll reflect what you're already doing anyway. The only, the only two landlords, two types of landlords that I think would be nervous about this would be either those who don't understand it yet, in which case there's a fix for that and that's to help them understand it. Or it's the bad landlords who don't want to do any of this because they like that they've got complete freedom to push their tenants out for no reason or to impose excessive rent increases on them. I would say the biggest risk assessment that I've, I've done in my own head is what happens if we do nothing? If we send a message out to tenants, sorry, but the free for all carries on irrespective of the difficulties you face. What's that going to do for working people in the island who have to rent privately their homes? And whether they'll think that they've got a decent future here or are ever going to be able to own their own home or move somewhere nicer? Will they end up feeling that other jurisdictions that are making progress on this same issue, like England, which is about to move to a different tenancy system, might start thinking their chances are better off elsewhere? And I think that's the biggest risk that we face.
Yes, this is not the foreword to have a debate on that, but I have here the guide to Renters Rights Bill of the UK. It's fair to say that a lot of the concerns in England are due, due to lack of standards being implemented by landlords, which we've addressed in other ways. So what we're really getting at is that there is certainly, and I read also an article in the Sisters Journal, saying that they believe that rightly or wrongly, it may be a misunderstanding. They do envisage that there will be a reduction in the amount of property available through landlords for this very reason, that that's what I'm getting at. How, how serious do you take that?
Honestly, I don't take it that seriously because if ever, if a landlord, a good landlord looked at what I'm proposing and their response was, I'm thinking of selling my homes now, my question to them is why? Why? Under this framework, you can still have a really good relationship with your tenant. You can still make money by being a landlord. You can still reclaim your property if there's a risk to it or if you're worried about protecting your asset. All of those procedures are still in place. The only two things you won't be able to do are kick out your tenant unfairly or impose a completely unjustifiable rent increase on them. And why would you want to do either of those things anyway if you're serious about being a decent landlord with a good long-term relationship with someone who pays you money to live in the property that you own? I, I understand that with change is trepidation. And that's why I've got a job to make sure all of this is communicated effectively. But the actual content of the proposed changes, I don't think poses as greater risk to the rental market as the risks of doing nothing.
Okay, I think, I think we should leave it at that and we, I'm sure we'll go into this in more detail when we come to scrutinise the legislation.
And so move on, as you've mentioned about receiving rents, about rent stabilisation measures. Nicely ties in. Can you elaborate on any specific rent stabilisation measures that you have been considering? Which measures were deemed to be the most effective?
So the two that we've been very clear about from the start and which appear to not be particularly contentious are making it clear in law that rents in a tenancy can only be increased once a year. That's not contentious. Pretty much everybody agrees with that. To require a minimum notice period of two months when a rent increase is being applied. Again, that's not particularly contentious, but it will be of great relief to tenants to make sure that they've got at least a bit of breathing space to plan around their personal finances and their paychecks, the cycle that they get in receiving that. But we've also been clear that we want to propose a metric of some sort that limits how much rents can go up in one particular go. There's various options that we've looked at, some based on capping at RPI, some based at capping at average earnings index, an average of, of RPI over a particular period, putting two metrics in and saying you go for the lower of the two. We've looked at a wide variety of those different options and have asked for some input from the economics unit as to what, which of those measures they think might have the, might, might, might be most suitable in Jersey's rental market as it currently is.
Have you determined and come to a conclusion of which method you are going to use?
So I, I'm thinking that the sensible one to use is to cap rent increases at either RPI or 5%, whichever is lower. The reason for that would be that it would shelter tenants from big increases during high times of RPI. We've, we've seen in, in recent years, RPI being uncharacteristically high from what we're used to. That rent increases being imposed at those kind of levels would be absolutely devastating for tenants and a cap of RPI would have been no good for them because RPI was high. So say that even in a time of high RPI, the maximum it could go up would be 5%. The reason for that is that it's a relatively easy thing to impose because it's clear. RPI figures are produced every quarter by Statistics Jersey and they're well publicised, they're easy to access. And 5% is 5%. That's clear. You can work that out with a calculator, no problem. We've also had a bit of feedback that it's a practice that exists to some degree already by some managing agents and some landlords that already kind of have this system in their contracts because for them it seems fair and, and not too harsh on tenants. So for those already adopting that practice, this would be no change to them, but would shelter tenants. So that, that's, I think, where we've settled on as, as the one to move forward on.
Okay. So when you talk about rent stabilisation, there has to be a consideration of the number of unfair cases of rent increases. I mean, do you know or can you elaborate on that scale of unfair increases that you?
So, and the thing is, no, we can't because we don't collect data of actual rents. That is something that did used to happen in Jersey, but hasn't happened. We haven't had the structures in place requiring actual rents to be measured. I think there was something in the 1946 rent control law about a register of rents and, you know, so it's not an alien concept to the island. So we have best guesses and anecdote. I can tell you from my email inbox that it is a very regular occurrence and has been for some years that I get people contacting me who are faced with the choice of either lumping a extortionate rent increase or having to find a new home. And that is, that's difficult for a tenant because moving home comes with a cost. So they have to work out, is the cost of moving in, in the long run going to be worse than just putting up with this rent increase, bearing in mind that they can't fight it? If a landlord says rent's going up by this amount, as, as long as it's not against what's already in the contract, there's nothing they can do about it. So it, it's feedback that I get a lot of.
So with the rent stabilisation and you've talked here about them not being enforced. So we have heard previously your discussions around a rent tribunal. Are you able to update us in how this, any sort of rent tribunal panel will be made up? And are you sure that you can have sufficient funding for it to be functional to enforce these stabilisation methods?
Sure. So the intention is to establish a rent tribunal in the residential tenancy law amended version that I'll be proposing. So we will be proposing repealing the 1946 law, which currently gives the rent tribunal its legal basis. So that will cease to be and it will be provided in a, a new law. Some things will be in, in common with what we'd looked at previously. I still intend for it to be the States Assembly, for example, that appoints those and for them to be independent people. So not me or not officers on my behalf. So that, that's in common with what the previous system was. And there've been heavy discussions in recent months with the Judicial Grefia team to work out exactly where that tribunal would sit in that system, what we've got to do and how we might resource that. So the beginnings, I think, of a business case are being looked at for how that can be provided for in a future budget.
And you mentioned there about repealing the 1946 law, but also mentioned that's where the ability to collect rent data will be. Are you prescribing then in, within your new RTL, that ability to collect that data will still be there to inform the tribunal?
That is a very good question. Well spotted. So, so in the amendment, so, okay, there are two, there are two options of how we can correct, collect rent data. We can either commission Statistics Jersey to do some kind of representative survey to get a picture of what it is. And there's a science behind that to make sure they get it as accurate as possible. That will cost money to them to dedicate the time and resource to be able to conduct that survey. Or we could amend the rented dwellings licensing system, which is new to Jersey now, but in force, to require that when landlords are applying for their licences, as they're required to do every two years, that will have another box on the form that says, and what's the rent that you're charging? That would be pretty easy to do. The, the law changed to enable that would be in the package of amendments that I'd be proposing, but I, I think it would, it would amend the rented dwellings license. Is that right?
Not quite. So, so the, the two laws do two different things. So you, you can't embed a, a rent data requirement in the licensing law because that's dealing with health and safety matters and it's, it's not really relevant to that law to collect information. So what we'd be looking to do and what we've discussed with our colleagues in regulation as a matter of principle to make it easier for landlords to make it easier for landlords and that they're not having to fill out multiple forms through different government gateways, that we would create the provisions under the residential tenancy law to require the this, the providing of rent information. But we would look to do that and streamline it with the licensing process so that we are making it easier for the customer. Ultimately, the data sets have to stay separate. And these are some of the finer details that we'd work through with regulation to make sure that even things like data sharing agreements, making sure that data is held securely, they're all very important considerations. But there are some, you know, there's wizardry you can do with the online forms that actually splits that out and and to the customer, they get a simpler experience and on the back end, it's just a little bit more complicated.
Just a quick one on that, the nineteen forty six law captures the data or requests that the minister shall prepare and keep up to date a register for the purposes and make that register available for inspection in such a place and manner as the minister may determine. So with regards to your collection ability, you would have the ability, I presume, Minister now to place wherever you like a collection of that data and inspection. But moving forward, to what extent should rental data anonymised or otherwise be be available for the benefit of the island for making decisions and? Yeah, I'm breaking the law by not doing it already when the law says that we we ought to be doing it. So the the idea is that the data that would be collected from it would inform the rent tribunal to give them an accurate picture on what market conditions are like at a particular point. Because if if cases are coming to the rent tribunal where the dispute is over whether a rent increase is reasonable based on market conditions or whatever, you'd want the rent tribunal to have an an actual picture of what of what the market picture actually is. So that that data would obviously feed into that. I mean, I I probably wouldn't go as far as determining that it would be appropriate to, you know, put very fine detail of what rents are being charged in what properties into much greater use than that. But certainly informing the rent tribunal.
Okay, I might be wondering, we've had some very positive conversations with Statistics Jersey, who are very interested in this this progress in the minister's policy. It's something that they've actually been advocating for in terms of a higher standard of rental data being available to them so that they can report on the market. And they do that to an excellent standard and they would be able to manage some of the the maybe distorting statistics that might come through where, let's say, a landlord has an exceptionally low rent and that's how they want to manage their property. You don't want those sort of exceptions sort of distorting. So they will be able to apply statistical best practice to make sure that that information does come into the public domain, that it is helpful for the island to understand what is happening in Jersey's housing market, but it's done so in the right way.
So just to sort of round off this, you, we've had approximate dates for the residential tenancy law coming forward. What do you envisage the time scale for the rent tribunal to be coming back as well?
So it wouldn't need to be immediate because if you're introducing rent stabilisation measures that are based on how often rents can be increased, you're not going to get a dispute in the short term because of the limits you're setting from the outset. So we've got a bit of wiggle room there. I I don't have a date in mind exactly for when the rent tribunal would come into force, but it doesn't doesn't need to be immediately. So we've still got time to get the business case sorted and to get the body ready to be up and running.
Yeah, can I just query that? I mean, you, I hear what you say, you know, about the provisions need a time to build up before anyone takes a case there. But would it not be logical for rent tribunal to come into force or to be there at the time the the new law comes in? So that everyone knows that it is there already, ready to go for whatever, for whatever purpose an action is taken?
It would be logical, but it's not illogical to do it the other way as well because there is no rent tribunal in force right now. So that's no change in that transitionary period before it's eventually set up. So nobody's worse off because of that. I I don't anticipate that that you would, you would get a massive round of disputes arising on day one because of the nature of the way that we're proposing that rent stabilisation would apply. So, yeah, ideally you'd have it all on day one, but it's not, it's not absolutely necessary and it's not going to, it's it's not, it it doesn't undermine going ahead with implementing the rules earlier.
Okay, but knowing that government sometimes is not, is not too keen on promoting things once the law is through, are you able to give us some indication or would you have some ambition to have the rent tribunal in place by a certain date? After the law comes into place?
Well, since possible after, but I don't know what we're looking at at the time.
Yeah, well, there's a slight chicken and egg situation whereby the provisions that legitimises the creation of a tribunal are in the law, so that law needs to be active to commence that process. So there will be a recruitment and appointment process that will need to be undertaken. We'd absolutely be looking to commence that as soon as we possibly can. But that process would have to still run its course. So it would be on a sort of ASAP basis as once we've got the provisions in place to run the process of appointment.
My final question on this is that, as I understand it, the purpose of the rent tribunal will be to just look at the the rental, the increase in rental situation. I mean, is there any ambition at some stage to extend their powers? You said you spoke to Judicial Graff regarding the consequences of this law coming in as far as court case is concerned. Would it not be logical or at least to consider transferring those eviction cases to the rent tribunal?
Again, yeah, that would be a logical thing to do. But there's no harm in not doing that from the outset because the Petti Debs Court is still capable and able to do that, so that that wouldn't be a change. But perhaps at some point in the future, that could be something to visit. But for the commencement of this law, it's not harmful to not do it that way. And my priority is getting the law up and running. If it were to take me another six months to work on the procedures for transferring that from the Petti Debs Court to the rent tribunal and delay the establishing of a rent tribunal in the first place, I'd prefer for it to be more focused from the outset rather than delay it and have it more all encapsulated.
And again, it may be something that we'll look into when we have the details.
Thank you very much, Minister. And we're now going to move over to Deputy War.
Homelessness, right. You mentioned in the previous quarterly hearing that data collection on homelessness is ongoing and expects to be completed by the end of July. Can you provide an update on the current status of the data collection and any preliminary findings? First, can you explain how this data is different to the data reported in homelessness dot J E, which sources its data directly from the accommodation provider's data? And B, how often will you be publishing this data?
Yeah, so that's, that's been a really good piece of work. And there was an update at the most recent homelessness cluster, which was on the sixth of September, where we went through the kind of initial look at that data and how we've been able to look at the different breakdowns of what that's provided for. And that's been Jack that's led on that with some really good input from homelessness providers themselves and needs now up and running. And so that will, that will continue to be active and we'll be able to start tracking data soon. So at the moment, we only have one picture from that one, that that one quarter, a quarter's worth of data. So we we haven't seen any trends yet. Jack can, I think, give a bit more detail on practically how that works and is delivered.
So we have a workbook that was developed and the providers and the Housing Advice Service, they fill in that workbook once every quarter. So the first workbook went out in July and that was returned at the beginning of August. We've had to have a process of cleaning that data, looking and saying what it means. We have to be very sort of sensitive around disclosure because there's a lot of, you know, ways of getting that potentially personal information. Whilst there's no names given, you can, by the nature of the, the data, start to look down at gender and homelessness situation to identify people. So we've had to be very careful with that. We're now at a position where we presented the the first data to the homelessness cluster in September. We've looked, we've got feedback from that. And now I think that we're working on sort of a publish, publishable form of data, working with Statistics Jersey, which we we will be putting to the minister in the coming days and hopefully have something that could be released publicly in the coming weeks. It's, it's really important data, it's good data, it's a snapshot of homelessness in Jersey. We have to be really careful that this is people's lives, it's their, you know, personal information and making sure that that data is presented correctly, using the right terminology, making sure that we don't disclose personal information. But equally that we do highlight awareness and bring awareness of homelessness in Jersey. Make, you know, about the nature, the circumstances that people find them in. So there's the balance to be, to be found there, but I'm confident that we will have something in the coming weeks and which will put to the minister to publish.
Thank you. So how will the data, so I'm just sorry, I have a quick read of this because you may well have just answered this question. Yeah, so it's about informing policy decisions really, improved services for homeless individuals. Are there specific areas of focus that have been identified based on the data collected so far?
In in terms of, sorry?
In terms of, you know, with the data that you've got, how is that being used to identify, I guess, policy decisions? And and what should be done?
So I think one of the important things you said there was about, you know, how is this different to what homelessness that J E is doing? One of the things we are trying to do is track a person's journey at a very high aggregate level of how that they enter service, what their living situation pre sort of coming to the house or coming to a homelessness accommodation provider, where they were living, what the nature of the reason for their homelessness was, was, and that can be multiple reasons. Then looking through about their referral pathway, how they were then, what the situation was during that quarter and how they have then moved on and what the outcome is, or whether there indeed was an outcome, whether that is still in the accommodation, whether they've gone to live in social housing, whether they've gone to the private rental sector. And also in terms of the other agencies which are involved, recognising that homelessness is very complex, there's multiple needs. So our Adomental Health supporting our, is a domestic abuse charity or supporting. So I think that there's a rich source of data there, not just in the basic characteristics of homelessness, on sort of gender, residential status, but also trying to see where that that person's journey is taking them and so that we can improve our service and policy developments around that.
Okay, thank you. So we discussed supporting the Sustainable Tenancy Scheme in our last quarterly hearing. Can you provide more details on how the scheme is being implemented and its impact so far? Are there any success stories or challenges that have been identified?
So that's Heather's team that leads on that, do you want to take that?
Of course, so we've had successful rollout, really positive engagement with the Private Landlord Association. We are working case by case when we come across complex cases where traditional sheltered social accommodation does not meet the need of that person. We're analysing carefully what good looks like for somebody and how we disrupt current behaviours and prevent and improve future outcomes. We've had a really, one really positive case so far, which has had a huge impact socially within the family, reduced reoffending, substance misuse, stabilisation, prevention of children going into care. There's been some fantastic success always come out of particular cases we're working on. And we're working particularly target hardening, sort of hospital discharge and prison release at the moment. So that's our area of focus. That's where we see a gap at the moment where things could be improved. That's where we're seeing the the most amount of people who were unable to access through traditional routes. And so it's about looking to the future, adding prevention instead of the crisis model that we've implemented previously and looking at opportunity with new partners to understand how we can appropriately house somebody to improve their outcomes. So the answer in short is yes, there's been success and there's more success to come. We certainly see that in the pipeline, yeah, the opportunity.
Good to hear. So what specific preventative measures are being taken to reduce the risk of homelessness among vulnerable populations? And what new initiatives or programmes are planned to to enhance these preventative efforts?
Well, so, well, widening access to social housing is is part of that, that people who, you know, didn't, didn't tick the relevant box beforehand to be able to access it. We're fixing that and social housing should be available to all of those who need it, not just people who happen to tick particular boxes. So that's something that we're continuing to make progress on and will help people. The residential tenancy law changes is something that I hope will reduce homelessness cases because if you, if people are not threatened with the prospect of eviction as much, then that, that that means they are less likely to become homeless or or lose their home through that way. There's obviously the Violence Against Women and Girls work stream, which is one of the government's priorities. And as we're looking at the recommendation on follow on accommodation for victims and survivors to work out what what more services can do together to provide those, those options to those people. So it'd be various bits and pieces like that.
Okay, thank you. Next question then, there is an increasing amount of young people at risk of homelessness. What measures are you utilising to specifically tackle this problem?
Absolutely, so lowering the age criteria for social housing is a key part of that. We we're on track to be lowering it to twenty five years, twenty five years old in the next few weeks, which I'm looking forward to do. The homelessness data that Jack and his team have been putting together is going to help us track whether there are particular issues that are more prevalent amongst different age groups, for example. So if we identify things that are more often affecting younger people, that means we can tailor whatever we're providing through Housing Advice Service or or other government agencies to try, sorry, I've just got a slight dry throat, to try to package that together using that data. Sorry.
That's finished, your answer? We choke. How is the government working with homelessness charities and organisations to ensure that they are future proof and providing them with certainty following the closure of charities such as Jersey Recovery College?
Well, indeed, and we have longstanding relationships with some of the homelessness charities. Shelter Trust, of course, gets government funding. We have multiple groups which homelessness charities are frequently attending. The homelessness cluster is is one of those, that's once a quarter, I think, that that I attend. I'm going to forget the name of the other one, there is another ministerial group that homelessness charities, what's that one called?
There is the one next Thursday, which is the Homelessness Strategy Meeting with the Minister of Housing.
There you go, indeed, so so that has good attendance from other ministers as well. So Health Minister is obviously fundamental in this as well, so he attends that as well. So we're, we're constantly getting feedback from from those providers. They're also constantly in contact with members of our team as well. That, I mean, they're struggling, like all charities are, not, you know, across the board. I've saw recent statistics about charitable donations going down. We've been able to help Sanctuary Trust as well. We haven't particularly shouted that from the rooftop, but we've been able to give them some support, some support to give them some comfort so that they weren't looking at having to reduce service provision in the short term. Yeah.
Thank you. And so what discussions have taken place, and I guess you alluded to this, with the Minister of Treasury and Resources to discuss the issue of, well, no, hang on, so this is a slightly different question, arrears with Andium Homes, has the Minister of Treasury and Resources proposed follow up actions?
As in tenants' arrears?
As in, yes, tenants' arrears with Andium.
For what specific?
Well, we we saw, I think we heard last time, wasn't there, around this issue of Andium not being prepared to give tenancy and saying, no, sorry, you can't come in because you're behind.
Yeah, so we, so we would deal with those cases through Housing Advice. And when I've picked up on a couple of those, I've got them in touch with Housing Advice and we we will speak with Andium, we will work out if there's a particular issue that that we can overcome with a tenant, whether that's a prospective tenant, whether that's to help them lay out their financial situation better with Andium or, in fact, another social housing provider because they all have a responsibility here as well, to make clear, yeah, this is a safe tenant to take on and here's what we can do to support them and provide you with the comfort that they're, they're that they're not going to be too difficult, you can provide the home and help plan with them to overcome arrears if that's the case. But, you know, we own Andium, so if we need to be tough, we can do so. But obviously, we prefer not to get to that point.
Okay, my last question is, can you explain the process and how easy it is for most vulnerable, the most vulnerable to appeal to yourself as Minister for housing, the rejection of tenancies due to unpaid historic arrears?
If if people came directly to me for that, then I would instantly be connecting with the Housing Advice Service. And people have got to me with that. So I had a recent case of somebody stopping me in the street and we were able to fix that one very quickly by bringing in Housing Advice, going and speaking to Andium and saying, right, here's the situation, this person can't just be left to be homeless, they they need support. What's the issue? What information do we need to overcome it? What planning do we need to do on arrears? But I I mean, I can think of at least one example very recently where someone stopped me in the street and within a very short period of time, we'd overcome the issue and got them to be happy and a stable tenant. and within a very short period of time, we'd overcome the issue and got them to be happy and a stable tenancy with Andium.
Thank you. Okay, pass you over to Deputy Curtis.
Wonderful. Minister, you've already touched on this, which is the Affordable Housing Gateway. And if I take it, you confirm that in the next few weeks, the eligibility move will be down to twenty five years old and we look forward to hearing more timelines for that. But what specific measures are being taken with regards to that change to ensure that young applicants are aware of and can access the Affordable Housing Gateway when changes are made?
So we're we're having a bit of a think now about how we package up the communications for that when when it does eventually go through. There's some other things we're looking at at the same time to see if if multiple things can be addressed when we put out communications. But that's that that will be soon. And to to an extent, we have to rely on publicity for that. That word of mouth gets around and people will find out about it that way. But we're we're obviously very closely in contact with the homelessness charities who who will know that this change is being made. And if they have clients coming to them who would benefit, once that rule change is enacted, they'll know about that because we'll have told them and they'll hopefully be ready to help people there.
Great. So beyond the upcoming change, are there any other criteria adjustments being considered to further widen the eligibility to the Affordable Housing Gateway?
So I think we're coming up to the end of the roadmap for widening eligibility for social housing. So I don't have further definite changes to that that I'm actively preparing to enact. But I have said from the outset that we keep a watching eye on this, we look at where demand sits and if if people come forward as a result of these changes and we're successfully able to house them and with Andium's delivery of more homes, if we find that we've got capacity and supply, then I'm happy to say that I'm absolutely open-minded about seeing what else we can do. You know, I'd love to get to a situation where we can lower the age even further beyond this, but we've got to do so sensibly and manage that properly. And we'll keep an eye on where things are with demand and what we can do with Andium to help them market their properties more effectively as well to get to get people into those homes.
Okay. And then looking at the process of the Affordable Housing Gateway, how is the current application process being evaluated for its efficiency and user-friendliness? And are there any planned improvements to streamline that process that you're aware of?
Okay, should I hand over to Heather for that? Because, is that fair?
I don't mind.
Probably not.
Honestly, there are no measures in place to effectively manage the application process other than risk sampling, audits, making sure that our customer experience is on point and we're answering when we say we will answer. That is looked at on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, reported reported into our senior leadership team and publicised in terms of how long it takes us to get back to customers. So that's constantly reviewed. In terms of the application process, it's easy, accessible. A few tweaks that we can make there in terms of, you know, address changes when we move and logos and such. But it's a short form, it's accessible and we support people in completing that. It's out there, it's in paper format and online, we can do things over the phone with people too, whichever way it suits individuals. We constantly reflect, review, change based on feedback and we will continue to do that.
Great. To your policy hat, Minister, can you provide more details on how data from the Affordable Housing Gateway is being collected and analysed to inform housing policy and decisions? And especially any recent insights and trends that are emerging from this data?
Yes, so Heather and her team are constantly monitoring levels of demand and all all kinds of breakdowns that there are in that in terms of bedroom need, in terms of banding and all the rest of that. And they feed that into the Housing Crisis Emergency Task Force every week. So we can see, you know, if if particular demand is arising for a particular kind of property. So we can keep a watching eye on that. You know, there's things that we notice over time, that demand for two beds has slowed down, for example. So that means that we might want to think about if there's some flexibility we might want to do for that particular kind of home. If there's projects we might undertake with Andium, if there's better use we might get for particular homes that that they're not having people queuing for. Or is there work we can do with Andium to help market properties to increase awareness of them if we think that might be the reason that that they're not not getting people applying for them? So we pick up on things like that, but not not as of yet like major policy things. It's more little little things we can do.
Little things.
Yeah.
But that example of two-bedroom units perhaps slowing down, you mentioned one option is to talk to Andium about or social housing providers about awareness. But do you undertake any other kind of analysis as to what the cause is there? And if so, can you share how you've, you know, an example of how you've tackled a trend that you want to kind of dig deeper on?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is this is not a new feature of social housing demand. It was also with the previous housing minister and that's what led to the development of the roadmap for improved access to social housing. So we were looking kind of holistically across the board at the levels of demands coming through the gateway and what type of home that was creating a demand for, the new supply that's coming online via Andium Homes and sort of urban schemes, but also the recent housing sites that are coming forward and taking a stepwise approach to widening access and creating that additional flexibility where there is the supply in place. Much like the the previous answers, this is a constantly, you know, iterating area that is is always live. Whilst we've now sort of reached the end of the main roadmap changes that we'd proposed, there are further things that we need to do. So it's an ongoing conversation between my team and the Housing Advice Service about how we clean up that data as much as possible on the gateway. So we want to make that as representative of actual demand as possible. And we've got the minister's more recent rightsizing policy that also makes us think about how we're allocating our homes and what the barriers to rightsizing and social housing are. And the minister's looking forward to receiving the draft policies from the social housing providers to do that. So this is very much a live iterative process to make constant tweaks and changes in light of the evidence and opportunities that that presents to us.
And how do you see that balance between current demand for the stock, for example, two bedrooms, and long-term future demand, given Andium in particular's stock will be around perhaps for a hundred, two hundred years?
Yeah. I mean, balancing the demand on the stock is obviously, it's a key consideration because I want eligibility for social housing to be as wide as possible. But at the same time, I, we can't have a situation where people are languishing on waiting lists for horrendous amounts of time because of all of the insecurity that that provides them and, you know, potential denial of other solutions because of that. So so that that does have an impact on how quickly we can go in in widening criteria and managing how much demand we anticipate on that. Andium may also use that to consider i- if there's any tweaking we might want to do on assisted purchase products as well. So as well as building new homes for social rent, Andium builds homes for selling to first-time buyers. They sell some of their old stock to first-time buyers as well. It's not good to be selling stock to first-time buyers of the kind that there's high demand for social rent, for example. So we might, we might slow down on that if we can see that it looks like there's gonna be high demand for a particular kind of home on the rental side of things.
I guess that's probably where I'm trying to understand your direction, Minister, because right now, you know, a policy about today's demand may allow you to sell off a unit, but you may have an aspiration to see, I don't know, families or or young young families with one child living in a in more social housing stock. That may be your direction. But if current trends and, you know, there isn't sufficient modelling, you won't, you'll be selling off the stock you need tomorrow. So are you sure you have, are you confident you have the the correct methodologies and data to model what you want for that social housing stock in the future?
Yeah, and also it's to be very careful and not just do something out of instinct in one moment in time because it seems like a good a good idea in that moment and not to be starry-eyed when a proposal might be put forward for how some properties can be used to say, okay, let's take a deep breath and think about this a bit more, a bit more carefully. I mean, that that's the more sensible approach there. But but I recognise that there have been examples of programmes in other jurisdictions of selling off social housing, the rights-to-buy system in the UK, for example, being in my view a complete disaster in the long term, that we have to learn the lessons from and not allow that to happen. There are some lessons that we had learned on that though. So even even when we are selling social housing to first-time buyers, we're not seeing them ending up becoming investment opportunities for buy-to-let landlords in the future, for example, which was a big problem with scheme in the UK. So the the approach is to be careful and absolutely be cognisant of, you know, what does the future look like? And I'm and I'm somebody who wants us to protect as much of our countryside as possible. And if we get these kind of things wrong, then in the future, it ends up putting more pressure on us to concrete over our beautiful green space, which I want to avoid if possible.
Okay. And lastly, from me reflecting on on last quarterly hearing, you explained you'd asked Andium Homes to look at the mix of they provide of homes for purchase and rental. Can you detail if any changes have been made to the mix they offer as a result of those conversations? And do you believe that the current and new supply of homes will match, you know? So just following up really on any actions taken from the last quarterly hearing, what we can learn this quarterly hearing?
Not not yet. Okay.
So I'm gonna go to a few more miscellaneous kind of topics. So this one comes from a news report back in the start of the month for where a dozen members of the former Armed Services are now residing in temporary accommodation following damage from Storm Kieran. So further to these individuals being placed, sorry, these displaced individuals have been told that their rents are set to rise. Are you aware of the situation and what is causing the delay?
Yeah, so we're very much aware of this. And I think that the residents, for the news item you're particularly talking about is about Hague Homes, Princesses with Clothes in St Clement, which was particularly badly affected in the storm. I think that the residents there have done an absolutely brilliant job in sticking together, advocating for themselves and doing so in a really constructive manner. So it's it's been a dream to encounter people like that who I think have been really constructive and helpful. The Minister for Justice and Home Affairs and I met a very large group, a large proportion of the residents of Hague Homes a few weeks ago to hear directly from them some of their concerns. They have the difficulty in that Hague Homes is a UK-wide charity, so they're they're not permanently based on the island with a large stock of homes and the flexibility that you get and economies of scale that you get with that. So parts of the feedback that they've given us are about communication. You know, these are people who quite understandably wanna know where they're gonna live and what the time prospects are for that and how they can start planning for their lives. And, you know, we've heard directly from them stories about those who are living with family members that it's fine for a bit, but it's not sustainable in the long run. We've got good communication with the leadership of Hague Homes. And and credit to them, they have been very responsive to us and they have been frequently in contact with us. They've come to the island a few times where we've met them and they, and online as well, been communicating with us. So we're we're keen to transmit to them the importance of dealing with the issues that their tenants are raising with us. These are, these are people who serve their country and deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. And when it comes to a timetable for getting them back in their homes, we are impressing upon Hague Homes the importance of being as realistic as possible with that and not inadvertently offering false promises about timelines. And they are confident that they can get people starting back into their homes by the end of October. And the tenancy we've spoken to want to believe that and want to have faith that that will happen. So we're in constant communication with them, making sure that their maintenance schedule and of the works that's going on and those all goes according to plan.
So has the government offered any assistance to Hague Homes in this process?
So in those communications with them, we have, that they, we've been getting them in communication with Andium, for example, because Andium owns a lot of the properties in that area. They have great local contacts in terms of tradespeople and and that kind of thing. So we know that they've had a fair few conversations with them and hopefully by them being UK-based and not necessarily understanding that the rules in Jersey aren't always the same and that there's different providers for different works, et cetera, down here, that by helping them get a better flavour of the local context, it makes them a bit more effective in getting their work done.
Are you in discussions with the social housing providers to help mitigate these kind of issues in the future? So these smaller, smaller social housing providers that they might find themselves in an issue through natural disasters or situations beyond anybody else's control, that some sort of support can be forthcoming to so people aren't spent. Like, say, we're nearly ten months down the road and it sounds like we're gonna get closer to a year before these people get back into their homes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to. So I mean, I first of all say that actually the government has responded and provided a high level of support in response to each of the major incidents that we've experienced very regrettably over the last two years. And that is that, you know, immediate on-the-ground providing hotel accommodation, taking that burden off the landlord who needs to absolutely think about what they're gonna do to sort the property out as quickly as possible, where the government has stepped in to support the people who have been displaced. And going forward, I think it's been a reminder for all islanders about their insurance and their resilience planning for their own properties. There's, this is a widespread issue still across the island in terms of the recovery from Storm Kieran, the capacity of the sector to get the work undertaken. This is not simply about social housing providers and their ability to get the work done quickly. This is an island-wide challenge where we've got many islanders who are still waiting for basic or more complex repairs to their property because the capacity in the system just hasn't been able to respond and clear that up in a three-month period. But neither could we have reasonably expected it to have its, you know, of an unprecedented scale and it does take time to recover from that. So I think very much, you know, the government will always be on hand to lean in when there's an emergency situation and provide that immediate support. And equally, if social housing providers or other homeowners or landlords feel like there's been some particular challenges around your insurance products and the loss adjustment that they've experienced as a result of Storm Kieran, then they can approach government to share their thoughts and their experiences and we'll go from there.
Is this gonna work into some sort of more formal policy, maybe strategy in 2025? Or is this just going to just ongoing discussions?
I don't think ministers have any specific plans, but as I said, if, you know, islanders at large from which ever sort of homeownership or social housing provider or other landlord status has been experiencing particular challenges, then we'd always encourage them to get in touch and share those experiences. But at this time, I don't think there's any kind of significant pattern or anything that would be regarded extraordinary under the circumstances that we've actually had to to respond to in the long term.
Thank you. The next couple probably are going to be more around Treasury and Minister for Financial Services, but more just interested in your views around these kind of issues that some people are facing. Have you had any discussions around banks which are unwilling to provide bank accounts for managing agents who manage blocks or are charging high bank fees?
No, thank you for highlighting that with me.
There's a lot of service providers who are finding challenges to when you come into block management, especially with flying freeholds, that they're struggling to get bank accounts to manage.
And speaking as somebody who's spent years trying to get a bank account open for a political party, I can sympathise greatly with them.
And finally, Minister, what conversations have you had with the Treasury Minister around stamp duty? And how do these conversations impact your priorities around housing?
Yeah, so we had a conversation about stamp duty in the context of the rightsizing policy. That was your initiative, the proposition you brought to the Assembly. So so we, she was involved in that discussion to explore whether there was something that that could have been part of the package of things that we were proposing. And we concluded in that discussion that it wouldn't initially be part of that policy that we have brought forward, as you can see. But it was a consideration. We did talk about it and what options there may have been for pursuing that. It just happened that we concluded not to include it in that policy, but she was very much part of that conversation.
Okay. And as one former minister or a former head of scrutiny once told me at the end of your hearings to ask, was there anything that you were prepared for that we didn't ask you that you'd like to share with the panel now?
You get good advice, don't you? No, I don't think so, actually. No, not that I can think of. Thank you.
Right. Well, thank you very much, Minister, for attending our hearing today and addressing the panel's questions. We'll have a discussion afterwards and if there's anything. Uh we'll have a discussion afterwards and if there's anything else we'd like more information on, we will follow up in writing. Um so I thank you again to all the officers who have also attended and also members of the Griff staff who have assisted. And we'll stand there.